As you mentioned, I am the Director of Real Estate in the Deputy Mayor's Office for Planning and Economic Development. I'll be talking about some of the projects that we're working on related to housing in 2022. Under Mayor Bowser's leadership, we have, my office has actually completed over forty projects, including five thousand units of housing and eighteen hundred units of affordable housing, primarily deeply, deeply affordable housing, thirties and fifty percent AMIs. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about the projects that are coming online in 2022. And similar to Executive Director at the Housing Authority, what she mentioned, which is, a lot of these are very longstanding projects that have been out in the works for many years. And Mayor Bowser made a commitment to move longstanding projects, and she's doing just that with these projects. Already mentioned, we're Park Morton and Barry Farm, which we're very proud of and enjoy working with the Housing Authority on. And another project with the Housing Authority that's coming online is Northwest One, which Phase One is actually going to be opening this year, hopefully in the summer, early summer. And Phase Two will actually be closing and then breaking ground also in this year. So Northwest One is actually the first new communities project. It's actually the project that created new communities back in the early two thousands. And we broke ground on it approximately three years ago. And it will deliver at total completion, it has three phases. It will deliver over seven hundred units of housing and over two hundred and fifty units of affordable housing. So that's really a welcome project in that neighborhood. Another project that we're working on that will be opening in the spring of this year is Spring Flats, also known as eleven twenty-five Spring Road. And this project actually is paired with a senior project that is also delivering around the same time period. And this includes a historic preservation of the Jewish home for the aged, is what it was called. And this project will be delivering homeownership, so we're very excited about that because it's very important, as was mentioned earlier in the DCHFA presentation. Also delivering is the Fort Totten Town Homes, another homeownership project and another longstanding project. This project was actually started around two thousand and seven. And again, under Mayor Bowser's leadership, we're moving forward. We will be opening and selling these townhomes, and we're pretty excited. The neighbors, neighborhood has responded very positively. And, you know, we expect the sales to be, reflect that. Finally, another project is the, another new communities project is the Strand Residences. And this is a project that is related to the Lincoln Heights Richardson Dwellings project. And this project will provide off-site units for that project. And so this is similar to projects like Fifty-two One Hayes or Providence Place. Providence Place will also be delivering this year. So again, we have a commitment to creating new affordable housing and moving forward projects that have been out there for many years and are overdue, as was mentioned, in the community. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the Deputy Mayor.
Great. Well, thank you, Saroosh, and to all the panelists. I know we covered a lot of content, but we do want to bring others into the conversation. So if you want to join the conversation with a question or a comment, hit zero now on the phone. If you're on social media or if you're watching on Channel sixteen, use the hashtag thirty-six thousand by twenty-twenty-five, and that'll allow us to see the question and bring into the conversation. So with that, I want to go to the phone lines and see if we could bring Veronica into the conversation. Veronica, can you hear us?
Oh, hi. Can we hear you?
Yes, we can, Veronica.
Oh, yeah, okay. First, would you please speak about Row, which the address one four one six R Street northwest? Is that, the program is included for that area? And the second question is, you have a numerous program to help the affordable housing. Would you consider rent-to-buy program to be included for people who are not ready to buy, but willing, you know, wanted to have an own a home ownership, but is not ready for any reason, financial or maybe other reason? That is my question. That would be help a bigger opportunity for people who are not ready to buy. Thank you.
It's a really great question, Veronica. Veronica, if you're still on, can you talk, can you repeat the first part of the question? What was the area that you were referring to?
Well, it mentioned on the meeting with Watman owners is Row, R O W, one four one six R Street northwest, Watman, DC.
Okay. Why don't we get a little bit more, try to get you some information? If you can stay on the line, I think we can get your contact information to maybe get some more specific background on that question. And we'll do that, we'll do that off the call. But the rent-to-own was actually a really interesting concept. So I'm looking at the panel and I see everybody looking, wait, I see someone ready to take it. So let me go over to Drew. And then I was actually, I have a kind of a follow-up question for Chris Donald about HIP, the HIP program, and how prospective homebuyers, but let's go to Drew about rent-to-own and how we approach that.
Sure. So we, to begin with, to help people get ready to own, we fund a network of CBOs, community-based organizations, that help with financial literacy and really just housing counseling to get people prepared to transition, if they so desire, from renters to homeownership. So that counseling is a good first step to really get a flavor of what it is to get ready to be a homeowner. And we have other, other programs in the district, including our Tenant Opportunity Purchase Act program, which often results in tenants organizing in a rental building that's put up for sale and exercising their rights and ability to be able to either themselves or in partnership with a development entity to purchase that building. And oftentimes, we get homeownership opportunities out of that through co-ops and other ownership structures that result from formerly rental buildings.
And why don't we go to Chris Donald? Chris, talk to us about, you mentioned the HIP program. How do people find out information and how do they access it? Who's eligible to? I guess a couple of questions in there about HIP.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So with our HIP program, what I would encourage people to do is you can send us an email at info@dchsa.org. And please, in the subject line, put HIP inquiry. Generally, we partner with the developers that I mentioned in the model. And the developers are responsible for putting the word out on the projects that they're working on. I can tell you, we have one project in the works right now. It's called the Height, Residence, Todd Ailey Residence at the Height. And so that's just beginning construction, and there are several other projects in the pipeline. We also have another project that's under construction over in the Rosedale neighborhood. So if you afford us your information, we'll go ahead and share that with the developer. The developers market those properties to the public and through MLS, and that allows people access to buy them. In terms of qualification, there are income restrictions for qualified buyers. And those buyers have to be below about a hundred and fifty percent of the area median income. And that translates for a family of four to approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right. So another question that came up was about Rock Creek West. So I'm going to look to you, Director. Rock Creek West, I know that we have a long way to go on the goal. So what are some of the steps that we're taking? And how does some of the work that you described help us towards the goal? I think it's nineteen hundred and fifty units in Rock Creek West?
Yeah, nineteen, forty more, nineteen hundred and ninety.
Oh, nineteen hundred and ninety, sorry.
Nineteen hundred and ninety units. And that is the area of the city where the pace of housing production has really lagged behind. And so we're really making a lot of efforts, both in the housing tools and incentive side that Director Hubbard mentioned, but then also in the planning side. Really thinking about these major corridors, Wisconsin Avenue and Connecticut Avenue, incredibly rich in terms of transportation options, in terms of civic amenities, and just a high opportunity area. So it's really important, as we start our planning initiatives, we're really going to be looking at, how do you think about, what are, what are the ways and approaches that we can look at every single site that's available? Really apply every single tool that we have at our disposal, certainly explore applying every single tool. And to really take advantage of every opportunity that may be available along these important corridors. And so this includes, you know, small-scale apartments, like the ones that I mentioned, and low-density residential areas, all the way up to the major corridors, which can certainly accommodate more development. If you think about a place like the Chevy Chase Library and Recreation Center that I mentioned, really incorporating housing as a way of bringing in more affordable housing, but also renewing a really important civic amenity. That's what we really want to see. And so that's an example of how we would look at opportunity sites, certainly in Rock Creek West, all along the avenue. And in our roadmap, which we issued last month, we really identified a number of opportunity sites along there. And so you can go to planning.dc.gov and get access to that roadmap, take a look at it, and certainly think about what of the initiatives that I mentioned you're interested in participating in. Again, those are in Chevy Chase, Friendship Heights, Tenley Town, and then the Woodley Park and Cleveland Park Historic Districts.
And Director Hubbard, you've got a couple of programs, well, one in particular that I'm thinking of, that cashed to covenants that you announced and will soon open up. How does that help us in Rock Creek West?
So it helps us, again, we know that in those areas that are high amenity and have not traditionally had affordable housing to the scale we need, we're looking at ways to provide incentives for both existing buildings that may have vacancies to put those units under covenant, so we have affordable housing there and existing buildings that are already in the built space. Then also, again, looking at the ways we prioritize through our funding rounds to attract more projects and proposals from that planning area.
And so part of the reason the mayor launched the Initiative of Thirty-six thousand by twenty-twenty-five and the twelve thousand Initiative was one to measure, right? So the hundred million dollars, we wanted to be clear how much that investment each year would yield. One of the things I forgot to mention was that this year, there's how much, Director?
Four hundred million, I believe.
Four hundred million, yeah. So tell us what the demand has been like in the first round? And what do you expect sort of in the second round?
Well, we're very happy to see that, you know, there is interest in utilizing these dollars. And what we've seen through the first round of this RFP, we have over three hundred million dollars in ask for projects that have come forward. And then we're still, you know, accepting, as I mentioned, other proposals through into February. And we'll get, you know, way north of that number.
And so one thing I forgot to mention on Rock Creek West, Director, is the, and actually, we should go to our housing agency partner rules. We'll just go by first names for the rest of the day. Every, first Friday of every month, we all meet, and one of our rules is just to use each other's first name. So Anita, Rock Creek West, too, I don't know if you remember this stat, but before the mayor announced the goals by neighborhood, the pipeline, if you remember, how many units were in the pipeline in Rock Creek West before that goal was announced? Well, how many were, the pipeline was eighty.
The pipe, yes, the pipeline was eighty.
Now, since that time, the pipeline is now four hundred and forty. So one of the things that we talk about is that our emphasis on affordable housing, although it hasn't been produced, they haven't been produced yet, we see that there's five times more affordable units in the pipeline because of this intentionality. So we talked about it being intentional and that it'll take some innovation and then also investment. So everything that we talk about today is how do we get to these goals? Another question, this one is for Brenda. Brenda, this comes from Mr. Roberts in Ward Seven. And he asks that there's a lot of new housing that's coming up, and there's usually, you know, an affordable component that's small. But his question is, being on a list for years and years that are now closed, how do residents navigate this? And maybe if you could talk about that waitlist that Mr. Roberts is talking about and how you're approaching it with the Housing Authority.
Right. Thank you, thank you. I'm Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for that question. This is really timely because we are now trying to, in the process of updating our waitlist. And we will be coming out in the next month or so with some public service announcements and social media outreach to ask people who've been on the waiting list to please make sure we have their most current information. Because the reality is that we do have a number of vacant public housing units. And as I shared in my presentation, we're upgrading them, we're renovating, we're rehabilitating, and we're doing new developments. And so the, a lot of those units are really quite nice, and they are all over the city. So we, we do want to encourage people to reach out to us and let us know where, you know, your information on the waiting list and allow us to reach out to you and see if we have a match for you and your family.
And then Brenda, sticking on that, there are units in, not just the new housing that's coming up. I think this, I think it was from JT is the person's name. JT asked that, and, oh, actually, that was Mr. Roberts, sorry. Mr. Roberts' question was about kind of new housing and what we've talked about here that either Chris or Saroosh or Drew or Anita are working on. But you have units in DCHA that have been underutilized. So can you talk about that and the process that you're undertaking?
We, we have hundreds of units all throughout our properties. We have quite a few in our senior buildings that are really very generous-sized efficiencies or one bedrooms that have been modernized. We have units available in some of our family housing. It really is all throughout the city, and that's a big campaign. In fact, it's my number-one priority to fill those units so that we can take people off of the waiting list and put them into housing now. So that's not something you have to wait years and years for, hopefully, depending on where you are on the waiting list and what your family's needs are.
Thanks, Brenda. And Mr. Roberts, thanks for the question. Now, did have two questions from JT. The first, Saroosh, if you could help us with, it's how do city properties, when they're being redeveloped, how do they help us with our sustainability goals?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to answer that. So when city properties are redeveloped, they help us with our sustainability goals in two main ways. One is that they are required to meet the district's green building law. And I believe that law currently stands at lead gold, but I would have to confirm that. And the other way that we help move sustainability forward is we actually encourage the developers to use the green building standard as the floor and come up with innovative ways that they can add additional sustainability and resilience elements to their projects.
All right. And then JT had another question about housing types in the cities and what's available for returning citizens. Drew, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the work that our community-based organizations are doing with returning citizens?
Absolutely. So, you know, the types of housing, and we are very intentional when we put out RFP, besides just regular Housing Production Trust Fund dollars, we layer into RFP other sources of funding for specific populations, including from our partners at DBH, the Department of Health, other agencies that have specific money for specific populations. We are currently talking to and working with and have seen some proposals for doing some additional units, particularly for returning citizens. So there is funding in our budget this year to, to look at the production of units for returning citizens.
Great. And we have some folks on the phone line. Ms. Jefferson is up next in Ward Six. Ms. Jefferson, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Great. And you had a question about getting prepared to buy a home, is that right?
Correct. Now, I was asking about because, for, I'm speaking on behalf of those who are trying to establish credit. Now, I am a independent contractor, but without me using my business credit, I'm trying to establish personal credit, which has affected me because a lot of the lenders are judging me as if I have bad credit. So how would these programs help assist us, whether they're business startups or people who are trying to establish credit to afford these houses?
That's a really good-
How would these programs help us?
It's a really good question. Let me look to Drew to answer that. And Ms. Jefferson, if you stay on, we could send you some information. So why don't you stay on and give us your contact info? And Drew?
Absolutely. And that's one of the critical components of our Home Purchase Assistance Program, which is our assistance for folks who are really trying to find their first home and purchase it. Besides just the very important part of the program where we provide down payment and closing assistance, one of the hallmarks and one of the initial steps is doing the intake with our community-based organizations. And that is, that is one of the, the parts of that program is to do some classroom work, a lot of which is related to financial literacy, making sure that, you know, you know what you need to do. And they have financial counseling that can help you look at the types of things you need to either repair or look at or change related to your credit to make sure you can qualify for a first trust and get on that path towards homeownership.
And so, again, the program, just the overall program, the one that for folks to access is the?
It's HPEP, Home Purchase Assistance Program. If you look on our website, dhcd.dc.gov, there's links there. And we have CBOs throughout the city that can help you access the program and really walk you through how to get into that path for homeownership.
And tell folks, too, how much is it actually that they can acquire for the, it's, because it's down payment assistance, right?
It's down payment assistance. And recently, we were able to increase the amounts that are available. Depending on your income, I believe the upper limits right now are eighty thousand dollars you can access.
Okay. And so, Ms. Jefferson, we hope that you'll reach out to DHCD. Hopefully, we were able to get your contact information. But we want to make sure, too, as people make that pivot to being an entrepreneur, to working for themselves, that they're able to access these programs. So let's make sure we get in touch with you and you reach out. And next up, we have James in Ward One. James, your line should be open now?
Hi, yeah. I've been seeing a lot about building new residential housing downtown. And I'm wondering what the jar is going to be doing about making sure that some of that is affordable? Because I know downtown and some other parts of the city are exempt from Ivy and other stuff like that. So I'm trying to hear what you guys are going to do if you're going to redevelop the area. How is there going to be that affordable component, too?
Yeah, and let me look to Saroosh as well. But that's actually what the Housing in Downtown Request for Information is all about. So it's not just that we create housing in downtown, but we think about the right way to approach capturing some of it for affordable housing. So Drew mentioned a program that we have, which is a tax abatement in high-opportunity areas. And so that would be one tool that we could use. But Saroosh has been in some of these conversations with property owners. So can you tell us how that conversation plays out and why the RFI helps?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's a great question. And we certainly do want to ensure that there is affordable housing in all of our projects, including downtown. And one of the ways we're doing that is through this RFI. And the RFI basically is reaching out to the industry and asking them to give us information about their projects that we could then go back out and understand more about, how much does it cost to do these conversions? What does it take to do these conversions? And, and then through those conversations, how do we incorporate public benefits into those conversions, including affordable housing?
Great. And if we go to that slide for the Housing in Downtown, you'll see also why it's a good time to do this. And this is something that we looked at a few years ago, but the timing wasn't right. What we see now is that of the commercial space, there's about a hundred and seven or a hundred and eight million square feet. And with the vacancy rate being over twenty percent, about twenty-three million square feet are available. However, that doesn't mean that they're always in the same building. So Saroosh, what's kind of been the recipe for the buildings that are looking to sort of convert from one use to another?
Yeah, that's, we don't yet have a recipe. That's a good question. That is actually one of the key elements that we're trying to understand through the RFI process. But generally, what we found is that if I could talk in generalities, older buildings, buildings that are what are considered Class C buildings. So older buildings, and then it also depends on, as you can see from this map, their location on the street grid. So if a building is basically sandwiched in between two other buildings, it's difficult to get the floor plates necessary to do residential, whereas if a building has three open sides, it's a little bit easier. So we, we have a number of technical challenges. As the Deputy Mayor mentioned, there's also the vacancy issue. So a Class C building, for instance, that's entirely vacant, that has, you know, not too deep floor plates. And is it an area that, you know, we think could sustain a significant amount of housing?
Great. And I know we're coming up to the end of our time, so we're going to do a quick round the horn with our directors just to give their parting thought and what they're looking forward to most in 2022. So we'll start with you, Anita.
Thank you. So definitely looking forward to engaging residents and property owners and businesses around our community planning initiatives. If you want to learn more, please visit, please visit planning.dc.gov. And we'd be happy to share information with you.
So I get most excited when we go to ribbon cuttings and these units are ready for residence. And so with that, I also want to point out one of our resources, dshousingsearch.org, which is a website that allows residents to search for affordable housing by any number of criteria, whether it's by ward, how much the rent charged per month is, amenities. So again, the units that we fund and with our partners, we do our best to make sure that all those units appear on dshousingsearch.org so that residents can find affordable housing as they look for it in all eight wards of the city.
Great. Brenda?
Sorry?
Oh, Brenda, so we're-
I am, um-
What are you most excited about in 2022?
I'm sorry?
We were just saying what we were most excited about in 2022.
Yes. I'm excited to really be part of this mayor's team of housing agencies that is really all of us contributing to meeting the goals of housing affordability across the city. We play a major role, and we are thrilled to be part of this team.
Brenda, I hope you're not just saying that because we're all here. Chris?
I can't even see you.
Chris?
I'm really excited, much like Brenda. We've got a really, I'll use a very colloquial word, dope team in the housing ecosystem. And it's really exciting to all be working all together in the same direction. I'm really excited about our RISHA program, I mentioned that a little bit earlier. And one of the goals that we have is to do a billion dollars in that adventure over the next five years. So the team is really excited about it and up for the challenge. On the hip side, we really want to partner with more developers. So if you're an emerging developer and you have a project, we would encourage you to call us and come sit down with us and talk to us. And finally, I am encouraged by our opportunity to participate in FFB, again, trying to bring more capital to the district that's going to allow us to build more units more efficiently. So those are the things that are on our radar screen for 2022.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would say that we are most interested in or most excited about food and housing. Mayor Bowser last year created the Food Access Fund that's focused on providing food access points east of the river. And we're really focused on sit-down restaurants, we're focused on fresh foods, we're focused on groceries. So I'm really excited about the projects that will be coming out through that program. And then, of course, our, the main bulk of our projects, a shameless plug- The main bulk of our projects, a shameless plug, we're excited about March Madness, which will be coming up in March, where we announce our projects for the next year. So we're excited about some of the projects that are coming up, again, moving longstanding projects and continuing to break ground on new projects and cut the ribbon on completed ones.
Great. We'll really appreciate that, Sarosh. And I think we're March 25th.
I think so.
March 25th? Great. So really want to thank everybody for joining us today. So mention that these are our housing agency partners, but what Mayor Bowser has really said is that all of the district agencies have to think about how they contribute to housing. So we do it with our partners at agencies like the Department of General Services, the Public Libraries, Department of Recreation, to really look across the district's portfolio about where there are more housing opportunities. We talked about Mayor Bowser making us the first jurisdiction in the country to have affordable housing goals by neighborhood. So we're really proud of that, but we're going to work together to make sure that we hit all of those goals. And really, we talked about why we're going to try to make more affordable housing in high-opportunity areas. If you look at some of the research from Opportunity Insights at Harvard University, it shows that families that have the ability to live in a high-opportunity area, even if they make the same income as a family that doesn't, that family really sees more opportunity to go to college, to advance in career. And so, this isn't just about building affordable housing, but it's about improving outcomes of the families who live in it. So we're really proud as the housing agency partners to lead Mayor Bowser's effort at 36,000 by 2025, but we need your help. We need you to continue to advocate for all of the tools that we talked about. We need you to be in touch with Councilmember Anita Bonds, who's the Outlarge member for housing, who is one of our partners as well, who helps us make sure that when the mayor puts forth a bold budget on housing, that it makes its way through the process as well. So we're all in this together as well, and although Washington has big problems to solve, we know that if we stick together, we could solve them. And hopefully, what you saw here in New Year of New Housing is to show you that we have an aggressive agenda to make sure that we advance on Mayor Bowser's vision for creating more affordable housing across the District of Columbia. So with that, thank you for joining us today. Be sure to check out obviouslydc.com for more about new opportunities that we have for our small businesses as well. Yesterday, Mayor Bowser launched the Bridge Fund, a $40 million opportunity for retail, restaurant, and entertainment venues, and more information on that can be found at obviouslydc.com. So to our housing agency partners, thank you for all the work that you do, not just today, but every day. And for those of you watching at home, thanks for joining us today and being part of the conversation.
We now return to...